Yeah, I put this discussion, consideration of action alternatives on proposed ordinance on the second amendment. So you each received, I guess in December, a copy of a proposed ordinance from a citizen who also came to speak on a proposed ordinance, Terry Schofield. And Commissioner Roberts asked that I put this on the agenda for the board to discuss. A couple of things that I want to point out is I did ask council to be prepared to talk about the legalities of the ordinance, and I'll ask him to do that when we get to that point. But I want to clarify a few bits of information that were represented to you. In your regularly scheduled Wednesday meeting before this last week or this week, so last not yesterday, but last Wednesday before, Mr. Schofield came in and represented that he had attended a hearing in Yanville County on a similar or on an ordinance regarding this same issue. And I was a little shocked when he said they passed the ordinance. In fact, what he said was they passed the measure. He first referenced it as an ordinance, and secondly, referenced it as a measure. And I did go back and look at the tape to make sure that what I'm telling you was accurate. And I was a little shocked to hear that because there are laws in our state that require you to have a first reading and second reading and public hearing on an ordinance, and then when they go into effect, unless they're declared an emergency. So I asked Commissioner Roberts to find out because I didn't believe that they passed an ordinance or a measure based on what I know the law to be. And essentially, Commissioner Roberts was able to acquire what they did pass, which was not an ordinance or a measure, it was a resolution. A resolution in their county is equivalent to a proclamation in our county, so what they passed for what you would be considering is a proclamation. Now, Mr. Schofield did represent that he, you know, was appreciative of what Yanville County would do and hoped that you would consider doing the same, essentially, if not in those words. And so, and, you know, why we referenced it as an ordinance and a measure, I'm not sure, unless Yanville County wasn't pretty prepared to provide a measure and they did do it, and I'm unaware of it. But what I'm aware of, based on what Commissioner Roberts was able to acquire after our discussion, was that they passed a resolution. A resolution lists wherestes, and I want you to be aware that wherestes are not binding whatsoever in a resolution, just kind of state politically or administratively or legally why you may be choosing to do something. It's actually what you resolve is binding. In our, in our county's case, we don't use resolutions, we use proclamations for those types of activities, but for board action, we use what are called board orders. So, and it's, it's more authoritative than a resolution. You're ordering the county administrator to execute something rather than you're resolving that the county commissioner or the county administrator can execute something, as an example. So this wouldn't be something that you would do as an order because you wouldn't be ordering any action you would be stating a position, which is what Yanville County did. Based on Yanville County's proclamation, I asked council to review, there were some assertions made in the proclamation that really are opinions rather than something that we can determine would be facts. And so council did amend what Yanville County did to prepare a draft, which I did send to each of you by email for your consideration. If you choose to move forward with this, if you choose to move forward with an ordinance, which is a whole different process and not what Yanville County did, then I want council to be prepared to explain to you what the issues are with what was proposed to you versus procedurally what we would need to do, so.
Thank you. And before we get into any discussion on this, council, would you please go over the legalities of the ordinance so that before we get into discussions, so people have the ability to weigh with their knowledge the ordinance information versus the proclamation information?
Hably. So this is, this was a document titled, "The Second Amendment Preservation Ordinance", it was provided, I believe, by Mr. Schofield. Is it a request for the county to pass an ordinance? As Daniel was saying, there are numerous, there's 17, 21 wherestes. Wherestes are not binding, but they do state political, factual, or legal opinions. I went through some of those wherestes just to sort of, where I had some concerns that it would be the board serving this as a factual or legal position. For example, whereas number eight, Mr. Schofield's document quotes Justice Tom Cooley, who was on the Michigan Supreme Court, relating to the right of local government to be absolute. I did not review Michigan's constitution, but in Oregon, the right to local government is not absolute. It's very limited under the Oregon constitution to, you have to, for counties, at least, you need to pass a home rule charter to have sort of home rule outside of the state laws. And then again, your charter and your county ordinances under the constitution are limited to only matters of county concern. If it's a matter of statewide concern, even if we're a home rule county like we are, we still are required to follow the state rules. And so there isn't an absolute right for us to determine how the county and business within the county is operated. So I did have some concerns with that.
So there could be a simple issue as simple as Michigan's constitution, Oregon's constitution have different verdicts, and necessarily one may not apply versus the other?
Absolutely. Again, like I said, I did not review Michigan's constitution. I just reviewed Oregon's constitution and the interpretations of it really to that.
And that's basically the state sovereignty concept of the constitution and how that would apply?
Correct. Under Oregon's constitution, the state is the sort of initial level of government. There is, we have what's called the administrative department of the Oregon constitution, so it's a little different than the U.S. constitution in the sense there are four branches of government in Oregon, administrative department being one of them. Counties are considered administrative bodies within the Oregon constitution. We are allowed, as a county, due to an amendment to the constitution, to adopt our own home rule charter, but it is limited to only matters of county concern. We still are required under the Oregon constitution to follow matters, as the state says, of statewide concern. And then looking at sort of matters of federal concern, we do a bit into the U.S. constitution and issues of federal preemption, where the federal law will preempt any state or local law if it's considered a matter of reserve to or occupied by the federal government. There, you know, there are various other statements. One of my concerns, and again, number 13, is he asserts that ancillary rights related to the Second Amendment include manufacturing, transferring, buying, or selling firearms. I wasn't able to find any support for this concept of ancillary firearms rights under the Second Amendment. Additionally, I would, that is also a concern I would have with number 16, or his 16th where he cites the Oregon constitution's sort of right to defend people, to bear arms. Again, trying to incorporate this concept of manufacturing and transferring as a right under the amendment. I didn't find any support for that under the Oregon constitution either. But again, it's, these are more opinion statements, which kind of gets outside of what a wherest is. My next concern was, in previous, where I'm, on paragraph 18 specifically, and he, Mr. Schofield's document references the Ninth and Tenth Amendment as being incorporated by the Fourteenth Amendment, and the Ninth and Tenth Amendment are irrelevant because the previous ones, the Ninth Amendment is about reserving, power's not reserved to the federal government, or first to the state, and the Tenth Amendment is powers, any other powers reserved to the people. And he uses the Ninth and Tenth Amendment to sort of talk about these ancillary rights to firearms, to manufacturing, and transferring, et cetera. Just as a point of law, the Ninth and Tenth Amendment have not been called, let's call it incorporation, so the Fourteenth Amendment created certain due process rights. The U.S. Supreme Court has determined that not everything within the Bill of Rights or the U.S. constitution is applied to the states. So it's called selective incorporation. So they've gone through the various amendments through the Bill of Rights and determine, the U.S. Supreme Court hasn't determined which of those rights are passed through to the state through the Fourteenth Amendment. Specifically, the Ninth and Tenth Amendment have not been incorporated as being, as applied to the states. And so there's not a reservation to the people under the federal constitution of other rights as applied to the state, if that makes sense. Constitutional law is a fairly technical and at times dense area of the law, and so I'm trying to sum it up to some extent and get out of the legalese. Again, the additional wherestes are a lot of opinion statements about, we disagree with things that the state or the federal government has done, and they're political statements that, again, are political statements. Just moving into the actual text of the ordinance itself, I'm looking at what he is, labeled paragraph 24. The sub-1 of paragraph 4 says the right of the people in Jackson County to keep and bear arms as originally understood. I guess that is a difficult statement to say as originally understood. Again, that's an opinion, and it resurfs the right of the Oregon Supreme Court and the U.S. Supreme Court to interpret the constitution. The U.S. Supreme, both under the U.S. constitution and then of the Oregon constitution, is applied to Oregon Supreme Court. The judicial power is reserved to the Supreme Court and the Oregon Supreme Court, and the judicial power includes the ability to interpret and determine what the meaning of the constitution and whether various laws are. And so this sort of concept that we're adopting in ordinance, limiting the interpretation of the Second Amendment in Oregon's, the Oregon constitution's right to bear arms as originally understood is an attempt, is essentially usurping the judicial role that those constitutions give to the Supreme Court and the Oregon Supreme Court. Sub-2 of that, the people to freely manufacture, transfer, sell, or buy firearms, which are designed for the same purposes. Again, there had concerns, as I talked before, that I wasn't able to find any support legally for the concept that these are, these are fundamental rights as well. You know, the constitution talks about, you know, bearing arms, it does not talk about manufacturing, transferring, selling, those types of activities. Moving into paragraph 26, again, it's declaring that certain things are the supreme law of the land, and anything, the supreme law of the land, so it declares that the Second, Ninth, Tenth, and Fourteenth Amendments, the U.S. constitution, and Article 1, Article 1, Section 27 and 23 of the state constitution shall be regarded as the supreme law of the land, and anything violating the right to bear arms or the ancillary firearms rights is unconstitutional. Again, that's usurping the judicial role reserved to, under the constitutions, to the U.S. Supreme Court and the Oregon Supreme Court. It's my opinion that the Jackson County Board of Commissioners doesn't have the authority to interpret the constitutions and whether or not particular ordinances violate, or particular state or federal laws violate those ordinances.
Is it our reserve or is it the Supreme Court's?
Again, it's reserved to the, to the various Supreme Courts. Moving on to the next one, we will not authorize or appropriate government funds to the infringement, to any rules that infringe, this is 27, sub-1, to enforcing any rules that may infringe upon the right to keep or bear arms. Again, the authorization or the appropriation of government funds is, of course, within Jackson County, is the board commissioners' right, but I do have some concerns that we may be violating state law if, for example, we, if there is a state or federal law mandating that our sheriff does something, and that we specifically don't appropriate funds to that particular function, as opposed to a general delegate authorization of funds to the sheriff to enforce laws. I would have some concerns because the sheriff, as an elected official, has his own discretion under Oregon budgetary law and how he's going to appropriate his funds. If we start trying to, we essentially lump some sheriff to a large extent. Can you correct me if I'm wrong?
We give him appropriation.
We give him an appropriation, and he then spends that appropriation to enforce laws. If we attempt to mandate that he not use that appropriation in certain ways, we are infringing upon his rights as a sheriff to his discretion as a sheriff.
Those are constitutional provisions within the state of Oregon that he's granted?
Yeah, he is, the office of sheriff is created under the Oregon constitution.
So those, those aren't just laws, those are constitutional laws under the state of Oregon that grants him the authority to be able to do that?
And they have been tested in court as well. It's not just that it's stated, it's been decided.
I just wanted to clarify the strength of those, that this position is.
And so the types of laws that it's in 28, what's labeled 28, so we don't, and spend any money enforcing registration requirements. Again, I haven't done anything to make a registration for an existing law or requiring registration for all existing lawful firearms to be an unconstitutional provision. Currently, there is no law that says everyone has to register firearms that I'm aware of that I couldn't find, but, so there hasn't been any court who's had an opportunity to determine whether or not that would be an unconstitutional provision. However, that, my concern would be is that it likely probably would not because of sort of various other court cases. Court has found that there is an individual right to keep and bear arms, but it didn't, they did not seem to go so far as to say that the state had no ability to regulate that area. Again, this is sort of another prohibition, we won't spend any money, we won't spend any money enforcing things when we dissent on firearms or quote-unquote assault rifles, prohibition against certain types of clips, registration and background requirements, restrictions on possession, carrying, or transportation of lawfully acquired firearms. Again, these may be covered by federal or state law that preempt the area as originally spoke about. We only can, we can only regulate with matters of county concern based upon sort of where the Oregon Supreme Court has looked at what is a matter of statewide concern versus what is a matter of limited to county concern. My opinion would be, again, though it has not been decided yet, is that likely firearm restriction would be, likely found to be a matter of statewide concern. So we could determine that within our county firearms, based upon sort of other cases I've read, are firearms within the county are different than firearms outside of the Moving on to section 33, you know, it acknowledges certain provisions of existing law, and acknowledgement of law isn't necessarily, if ordinance doesn't acknowledge law, an ordinance makes law. And so I would have concerns about us acknowledging law. I don't think it would be legally incorrect, it just wouldn't be prestigiously correct in the context of an ordinance. And then finally, with section 34 giving some concerns, again, it shall be the duty of the sheriff to determine whether firearm laws violate the U.S. or Oregon constitution. This is labeled 34F. Again, the sheriff doesn't have the authority to determine constitutionality, that is reserved to the U.S. Supreme Court and the Oregon Supreme Court under the two respective constitutions. And then my final concern would be sort of the penalty section, and it essentially creates a county violation, it decriminalizes compliance with state and federal law. And I would have some concerns if the county attempted to essentially criminalize compliance with state or federal law. I feel that we would likely be found to be preempted in that area by either the Oregon and the U.S. Supreme Court, based upon the concepts of federal or state preemption of local laws.
Okay. You've heard about the proclamation, and you've heard about some of the legalities of the ordinance itself. Do you have, do you have any questions of staff? And let's, let's divide it right now into the proclamation first. Do you have any questions of staff on the proclamation?
I think I understand what proclamation is, is attempting to enforce a deal. My question really comes to ordinance.
Well, I have tons to add, but you understand if that's your question.
Do you have any questions of staff at this point on the proclamation, or verdicts or anything? And let's move over to the ordinance. Do you have any questions of staff regarding the ordinance of what Joel just presented?
There's just a couple here. First of all, the ancillary rights you mentioned, I know they're not delineated in the Second Amendment itself, but is there any case law that you could find?
Not, not, not that would sort of create that these ancillary rights as being rights guaranteed by the constitution. Does that make?
Yeah.
I mean, we have laws related to the manufacture of firearms, you have to be for manufacturing or transferring, you know, what is it, FFL, federal firearms, FFL. So there are rules and statutes related to the manufacturing. I couldn't find any case law that sort of had incorporated those as being fundamental rights guaranteed by a constitution.
So no holding that they establish rights under the Second Amendment that are ancillary rights as they listed in there?
Not that I was able to find.
And I don't know either, I just.
Again, again, I did some research. There may be cases out there, but I was unable to find any cases that sort of created this concept of a constitutional right to manufacture and transfer arms.
Okay. Other than that, I think you covered pretty much anything that I would have a question on, going through that bit by bit.
Okay. Question of staff on the ordinance. My research has not been able to find any county in the state of Oregon that has even started the process on such an ordinance. As Mr. Schofield has asserted during his testimony to the board during these different times, have either of you been able to find any, any of the ordinance getting started or in the process within the state of Oregon within your county?
Well, what I was, what I have heard is that Laualaw County had passed an ordinance. I didn't contact Laualaw County, so I'm not, I wasn't able to verify that or not. My guess is, you know, if they passed an ordinance, as I said, there's a legal procedure to go through, which requires a first reading and a second reading and public hearing. I would assume they wouldn't adopt it as an, as an emergency, but they may have if they did adopt an ordinance. I am, as far as I know, the other county, Yanville County, did not pass an ordinance. They didn't consider an ordinance, and as I said in my previous explanation, they, they passed was a resolution, essentially resolving that they support people's rights to keep and bear arms, and no infringement on those rights. Essentially, you can think I provided you a copy of actually what was resolved.
And what I've seen that came to me from the Firearms Federation is Laualaw County did pass an ordinance. Wheeler County, Yanville County, Clamath, Douglas and Lane have passed resolutions. And, and not blaming Mr. Schofield for this, but Firearms Federation, the title of the presentation said, "These counties have passed ordinances." I mean, they've presented it as ordinances, and when you click on them, they're resolutions, except for Laualaw.
Can you get a copy?
Yeah, I have it on the computer.
So Laualaw's has gone through first second reading, it has, it has been the entire process?
The document just says an ordinance.
Can you get a copy of that to distribute to the board?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay.
We can actually get a copy of all of those if you would like us to, and distribute them to the board.
I just wasn't aware.
All I was aware of is what you were asked to do and what was presented to you, and the board has not directed us in any specific direction, but if you would like a copy of those, we can have Joel get ahold of the county.
I can give them to you.
Would you please?
I will.
Withstanding legal review, the ordinance as presented, sounds like it has some flaws. Wouldn't most likely withstand legal review in ordinance?
I would, I would agree with that statement.
Now, would an ordinance, now, how do I phrase this? If we were to create an ordinance, then in our opinion, wouldn't withstand legal review. I'm not, I don't know, so what if? By what authority would this legal, would we have to be able to create this ordinance? Or, and to be able to protect the Second Amendment rights versus what the state is proposing to do? If these laws come into play, essentially, if we write this ordinance and we move forward with it, how strong this ordinance can be, and what's the reality of it, being able to protect Second Amendment rights for the citizens here in Jackson County if the state proceeds to make issues of doing it?
So I guess it's difficult to provide legal analysis on hypothetical ordinances. We would essentially, we have the authority to regulate under the Oregon constitution, and because we're a home rule county, we have the regulatory authority to pass ordinances related to matters of countywide concern. And so I would have some concerns about how we would draft an ordinance related to firearms that was limited to matters of countywide concern. I haven't seen one, in my opinion, is this one is probably goes beyond the matters of countywide concern and into matters of either federal or state concern. But if we could come up with a matter of somehow firearms were related, and limited the ordinance to matters of county concern, I think that it likely could withstand some review. But my, my legal opinion is firearms and protecting the Second Amendment likely are going to be matters of statewide concern, as I said earlier, or even to the matters of federal, if the federal government thinks federal preemption would prohibit us from passing an ordinance that violates the provisions, or I should say prevents us, we can do what we want, but an ordinance that we pass that's sort of conflicted with federal, federal law would be found to be an unenforceable ordinance. But if we could come up with somehow an ordinance that was stricter to manage the county concern, I doubt that we could, but that might be able to survive a challenge.
And the other point too, is if we could come up with an ordinance that was a county concern and not a statewide or federal concern, it can't be more, or it can't be less restrictive than state law. So if a state law passed that was, that did restrict rights, our ordinance can't be less restrictive. The county can't be, based on our home rule charter, be less restrictive than state law. We can be more restrictive than state law.
And what's that in terms of?
Just a moment, please.
That's unconstitutional.
Joel, getting back to where the staff were going with this. You made a good point saying, we, if this is a hypothetical what if, we don't have the knowledge to draft an ordinance on what the state could do this next legislative cycle, because we don't know what the state is doing this next legislative cycle at this point in time.
Absolutely.
So, so to build a drafted ordinance at this point in time, not understanding what the state is actually doing, may cause more legal problems than what we may withstand at this point, or give the state the ability to write state laws around our ordinance, and basically if we did have something that could withstand legal review, it would basically preempt it immediately.
Absolutely. We could draft an ordinance, again, and we had this discussion on other things, we could draft an ordinance based upon our current knowledge of the state law. Again, it would take some time, I just don't know enough about the particular area, but if the state were to pass a state law within the same area, even unintentionally, if the state were to pass a state law related to firearms, it would likely preempt our ordinance. So it's difficult to sort of pass an ordinance guessing, not just on firearms or Second Amendment, but really on any areas, trying to guess what may happen in the future. And so, we talked about this on other things, we can, we can draft it based upon what we know today.
You know, I mean, I'm not going to confuse this, but Commissioner Roberts talked to me a lot about wanting to make sure that the people's voice is heard, and I talked with her about the opportunity to pass a resolution, as the most, most of the counties have done. And in our case, that's called a proclamation. And there's nothing that that would interfere with state law or federal law, with you all proclaiming that you support these particular rights. And the wherestes, you know, Joel pointed out the legal issues, but politically, you know, because they're not binding, you know, you can pretty much say whatever you want. But it's, it's what is ordered or resolved, according, in this case, you're not ordering anyone to do anything, you're stating a position, that's why a proclamation is appropriate, or a resolution in other counties is what they call it. So you, you do still have the option to do something, and you have the option of directing us to try to prepare an ordinance that counsel, but, but I think he's pretty much explained the likelihood of being able to do that is minimal.
And we really don't know, we have ideas of what the bills look like when they're presented to the state. We understand that it's a super majority, under current makeup of the state legislature, that is likely to move some of these bills forward. However, until they go to committee and get marked up, we have no idea what the reality is of these bills are going to be coming out of the backside.
And there's really no advantage to attempt to preempt what's coming out of Salem. You know, I hear some people saying that this needs to be done right now, because we're trying, I don't think that there's any real advantage to attempting to do that. I mean, something would be as valid and impactful as a reaction, I guess, it might be reactionary, but as something that you're trying to preempt what they're, what they're doing in Salem.
I mean, from a legal perspective, we can't preempt the state. So even if we're, this isn't a case of we're first in line, so, or first in time, first in line. Timing wise, whether, with the state passes a state law, before we pass our ordinance or after we pass our ordinance, it has, it's going to have the same legal effect on our ordinance, so that we wouldn't have any preemption effect by passing an ordinance beforehand.
The best we can do, if I understand it, is if we understand the state, the state law is going into effect, and there's something that might be missing out of law or something, we might be able to put something in place prior to, rather grandfather type situation, so that we don't, so we have something in place that might give certain protection. But until we know what that looks like, I don't think it'd be prudent to put that out.
Yeah, and I mainly mentioned that just to kind of address that concern that it addressed to me.
Okay. Let me ask this thing. It sounds like we're not looking at an ordinance, if I'm hearing things correctly. Is that correct?
I would have to say, you know, first of all, I would say, I applaud Mr. Schofield's efforts, I think it's something that needs to be looked at and needs to, some actions to be played. I'm just afraid that the ordinance isn't going to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish and it has, you know, potential pitfalls that have greater consequences to us and may eventually and ultimately have no legal effect anyway and may marginalize as a future discussions. And a proclamation, we state our unadmissible position on the Second Amendment and we send that message and the people's voices are heard and our position is heard and I think that is the better course.
Well, about the ordinance, I, I agree. I've looked at it and we are setting penalties for crimes that aren't in existence yet. And I look at elected officials, all we could do is pass more laws and that's what we'd be doing here and I'm against that. We have the Constitution and it's one sentence and we're replacing it with six pages of the case of this. And I appreciate the effort and the concern towards the Second Amendment. I appreciate, and the many citizens have contacted me about it and the counties that are stepping forth saying with their proclamations what they stand for in that Second Amendment constitutional stand. I don't consider it politically and I don't, I'm not a constitutional attorney either, but I don't think it belongs to the Supreme Court, it belongs to the people and the people want their Second Amendment rights. And as elected official, I will stand on the Second Amendment rights and I feel that our, can't speak for him, but our county sheriff has also said he would. As as far as putting together a proposal or a proclamation, the administration prepared us a draft and you guys have a copy of that and I think exceptions of this one too, there are unquantified allegations of things that may, we can't, I don't want to enumerate or...
Can I just clarify real quickly? That was not our opinions, mine or Joel's, that was Yanville County's, that was taken from Yanville County's proclamation and we did point out, I pointed out to all the email that there are those kinds of statements.
Yes, and so I, I don't know if this is time for, but I looked at all the proclamations the counties have put together because I want to join the counties, I want to join our citizens in stating, "We will stand for your Second Amendment rights." And you guys can look at this and see if something you can stand for. It's just states that initially, we're in certain events now occurring, it becomes necessary for the people of Jackson County to reaffirm and support the protection and rights granted by the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Oregon. All public officials swear an oath to these instruments and in keeping with that oath, it is imperative to note that in the matter of the Second Amendment of the Constitution of the United States of America and absolutely clear language of the Constitution of the State of Oregon, that the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. Attempts at incremental infringement shall be construed as an overt disregard of the undeniable protections and rights of these aforementioned documents. And it has some other whereas.
Do you have those out to everybody?
Yes.
We don't have to read it to everybody?
It's just, it's just the reason, I feel we are in need to do this and, and whatever you guys want to do.
So this is, this particular proclamation is something that you drafted?
Between taking the positives from all the other counties' documents.
Okay, so I'm going to reel it back in just a little bit here. We talked about at this point in time, I think I just heard you correctly, the ordinance isn't necessarily the direction we want to go. Okay, so counsel, we're not going to move forward in ordinance at this point in time. I think preserving that for future if necessary might not be a bad thing.
Yeah.
So it's not an absolute, but potentially a very good feature. Now, the, let's move over to the proclamation concept. Commissioner Roberts has just given us a copy of a proclamation that she has. Making a decision on that at this point in time without reading it and indepth in understanding what you've written, I think would be not smart in my opinion. I think you need to take a good look at it. I personally, and I know I'm a strong advocate for Second Amendment rights, I think it's a strong thing, but at the same time, I think that the people need to understand very clear that this is nothing more than a position statement. What happens at the state still happens at the state and this has no bearing on that. The people that they need to lobby, in my opinion, would be Senator Bates and Representative Buckley on this particular issue. From my understanding, the rest of the representatives of senators within Jackson County that represent portions of Jackson County are strong Second Amendment supporters. So I would encourage those people to spend their time with Bates and Buckley to be able to tell them the importance of their Second Amendment rights within Jackson County. So let's give us some time to go ahead and read this proclamation and set it up for a work session.
Is there any? You know, I just read through this real quickly, I didn't get a chance to see this. But is there any way that maybe staff could go through this and will track changes and send it back? I mean, I'm seeing some things that just aren't technically correct.
Well, that's what I was going to say is I want to set.
The all public officials swear an oath, it's not, that's not correct. It's all constitutional, public officers that swear an oath. And for example, I'm a public official, but I don't swear an oath because the Constitution doesn't require me to, it requires those delineated in the Constitution to swear an oath. Joel's a public official, but he's a county council and he's required to swear an oath because he's an attorney, not because he's elected. So there are probably other little things that maybe we could, you know, clarify if we could have some time to go through it and we can put it back on the agenda and that'll give you also time to go through it.
I was going to say, for the setup of a work session, the staff can review this for accuracy and then we can go through it and make sure that the whereas is represent the position of the board as a whole as we move forward. So I encourage everybody to take a good look at it and let's go ahead and make sure it's counsel is technically accurate also, because the last thing I want to see is us taking a position statement, which is basically what we're doing, and have spots in it where people are fixing holes in it in Salem. And if this is going to, in my opinion, diminish some of our ability in testimony phases as this.
You could technically have, you know, no whereas. I mean, really, if you look at what this proclaims, that's really what the key is. And it does proclaim the same thing as the Yanville County, that's correct, right?
Except we didn't do the, their, their background chat details.
Except for these are whereas, is what I'm saying, it's just on the, on the proclaiming part on, on your draft, this right here, it's the same thing that Yanville County proclaimed, right? If I remember correctly, I didn't bring it.
Um, I have Yanville County.
Well, let's look, we can look into that for a little work session. Yeah. Let's worry about it. And, but one thing I want to consider as we move forward with this is to make sure that we don't diminish our, our voice as these bills go forward with the state because we will be providing testimony most likely at some point in time during hearings at the state level. And I want us to be able to testify to be able to do the best representation for Jackson County to support the Second Amendment rights and not be allowed applicable. So let's keep that in mind also.
I was just pointing out, it proclaims the same thing because that's what was represented to the board, that, that at least Mr. Schofield would like you to follow Yanville County's suit. This proclaims regardless of the whereas is the same thing as Yanville County.